Welcome to the Longmont Housing Authority Board of Commissioners, regular meeting Tuesday, May sixteenth, twenty twenty-three. Can we have a roll call, please? I'll start. Commissioner, Chair Pep. Chair, Chair Joseph Pep.
Commissioner Erin Robinson.
Commissioner Mark, Sean Martin.
Commissioner Sean Clay.
Commissioner Tim Waters.
Enter on the Director Harold.
Housing Compliance Manager Tracy B. Press.
Accounting Supervisor Kendra Dean.
Housing Director Molly O'Donnell.
Lisa Galner, Regional Housing Manager.
Executive Assistant Director.
Commissioner Susie Welcomeberry.
Commissioner Shiki Yarborough.
Great.
Ms. Lawson.
Great, thank you. Do we have any agenda rotations or some issues or documents here? No, it's all good. All right. We need to approve the minutes for April eighteenth. Can I have a motion?
Move we approve the minutes from April eighteenth.
Second. Okay, so the minutes have been, the motion to approve minutes were made by Commissioner McCoy, seconded by Commissioner Rodriguez. Is there any discussion of the minutes? Seeing none, can we, let's have a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? So that passes. We have public provider be heard. Are you here to speak?
Yes.
Yes, great. Okay, you have three minutes and you may, the next please.
I would say if we're going to refer to anyone who's in tenant, no room numbers, no names, because this is recorded and I think available for recovery.
Okay.
No names, no nothing, just talk?
No numbers, not where they live, not where they live, or their name.
Just talk?
Yes.
That's why I came.
I thought that you were...
I mean, uh... So, Longmont Housing Advisory Board, City Council, Joan Harrell, Lisa, and all of you special people, thank you for letting me come and talk. I come because I care about where I live, where I've lived for seven years, because I care about what's kind of things that are my neighbors, myself. I try to show kindness and caring, but we're kind of having some chaos and a lot of noise since more in situations since I've been living there seven years. That's kind of getting interesting to kind of deal with. A lot of neighbors where I live have shared with me the same thing that I'm talking about, a lot of noise late at nights, like people leaving their TVs on, loud machines, running their sweeper like one did above me through the night, dragging their furniture. It's kind of hard to sleep and you never, there's never no quiet time. We, you know, like we can expect the dishwasher, the air conditioner, the garbage disposal to make noise, but when people aren't considerate of others, when it's quiet time, when you've got to have some quiet time to rest and sleep and otherwise that can cause health problems, which is not really, there's a lot of people there and they have talked. I like my managers and I try not to have problems with anybody. I show kindness, caring, I show kindness to different neighbors and stuff, but it's kind of like that we keep getting different ones and the thing is, is I think they themselves can only do so much, they don't really have the authority to do certain things. So they kind of just brush it off and act like, well, too bad, live it. And that really is not good. So I just came to say that myself, that I feel like that some way we ought to be able to address this, because I'm getting old and precious, mine will look like it, but safety and, you know, you've got to have rest, it's just not comfortable to deal with that off and on. My neighbor above me, I did go address it to her and she quit for a little while and she had some misses. One down below me, she complained a little bit about me and we worked it out too. So there isn't, you know, is, I don't try to be unkind, I try to be compassionate, show kindness and safety. I feel like this is not even safety, because after a while people get agitated. So I just wanted to come and say this in a nice way that I like where I live, it's a wonderful place. I like the people, we're kind of like family, we care about each other and we show, I show kindness, I show caring, I don't try to be unkind in any way. And I feel like there's some way that this is not being addressed, so that's why I came to say, say about it in a nice way, because I feel like that it should be that way.
Thank you.
You know, thank you very much for listening, I appreciate your thoughtful, Lord bless you.
Thank you. Are you going to address? So we have all new business, first one on the, I guess it is old business, Resolution twenty twenty-three sixteen, the C D G C V grant funds, accessibility project.
Sure, so Commissioner, Board of Commissioners and Board Chair, I didn't switch gears. This item is just the acceptance of those C D G C V grant funds for those accessibility improvements, the City Council approved this, you have any thoughts? You'd like any other question, comments on that, or have questions?
Move acceptance?
Sorry. So Commissioner Martin moved acceptance of the C D G grant, twenty twenty-three sixteen, seconded by Commissioner Waters. I do have a question, had you started when I'm, when I'm reading this, it says, signed permit construct rehabilitation improvements? And have you started bidding on that yet?
We're in bidding, in bidding right now, so none of the constructions started.
Okay, great. So those, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? So that passes unanimously. Renewal Resolution twenty twenty-three, First Amendment to I G A, to accept ARPA fund grants for HOPE or Street Development.
So this whole, I'll do a statement on this, you as a board accepted ARPA funds already in the amount of eight hundred thousand dollars for the HOPE project, that is going into the purchase of the land, this is an additional six hundred thousand that is becoming, coming in because of a reorganization of the budgets across the projects in the, in the ARPA Affordable Housing Project List. So that's why this is going forward, so it'll be used more on project expenses, predeveloped expenses or things that closing.
Great, okay. Can I have a motion for Resolution twenty twenty-three seventeen? I'll move approval.
Sir.
Commissioner O'Donnell Barry moved approval of twenty twenty-three seventeen, seconded by Commissioner McCoy. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Resolution twenty twenty-three eighteen, amendment to Zinnia Shared Use Agreement.
Again, we are preparing for the Zinnia project to close on its financing on May twenty-fourth, and so this is the second to last item that will come to you for consideration, the last one we have to bring as a special item at the City Council meeting on the twenty-third. So this one is just, it's just amending our existing shared use agreement between the Suites L L P, which is the entity that owns the Suites, and the city, who owns a portion of the land there on that site, to ensure responsibilities and just allow the use, basically. And so this amends it to allow the Zinnia project into that as well and aligns their responsibilities and specifically allows the construction easement to occur on the land around the property. So that's what this thing's for.
All right. Okay. Can I have a motion for twenty twenty-three eighteen?
To move.
Second. Who else? Commissioner? All right, so that was moved by Commissioner Waters, seconded by Commissioner Yarborough. Is there any discussion of this one? All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? So that passes unanimously. We need to review and accept the twenty twenty-two audit. That'd be you.
So I've done three slides, just kind of as a synopsis, I know you've got the eighty-page document. So to start off, the financial highlights, we received pretty much the same amount of grant funding last year, five point eight million, and we also received five point eight million in twenty twenty-one, so there was no really changes there. Cash and investments, we did increase about six hundred eighty-one thousand, and that was related to about five hundred and twenty-three K in developer fees that came from M S A and the Suites. And then we also had an increase in our H C V admin, as we're starting to, when we came on board in twenty twenty, we were actually at a negative net position, we were spending too much of our H C V admin, and a lot of that is because of the executive director and, you know, that, those costs that come with that. So we were in a negative position, we've got ourselves in a positive position now, and we've kind of increased, we didn't have as many expenses on our H C V program as we had in years past, so that brought up our cash and the investments as well. Our current ratio is at nine point nine-five, and so that's, that's really good, we made a big jump, and a big piece of that is our firewood loan. Last year it was a current liability, which was like five hundred thousand, it increased this year, and we need to finance it to move on to that. So for a fifteen-year period. Sorry, ratio of one to what? Oh, so the current ratio is like, how, how well can you repay your funds? So if you, you want it higher, not lower, because then it means you're not at a good, like if, if something happened and you needed to pay all your current liabilities and certain assets, if you were too low, you wouldn't be able to do it. So the higher we are, the more cash we have coming in, the more A R we have coming in to pay all the liabilities that are on the books. And then the expendable funds, we also went up on that too, and that's just the ability to pay our monthly expenses. Our net position? Let us take that one here. Okay, we did increase there, about two point seven million, and that will go to the next slide. We have seven different funds, we have our general fund, we have our housing choice vouchers, we have our mod rehab, which is our S R O, we have firewood six fifteen main, the L R A program, which is funded by the City of Longmont, and the Longmont Suites. Most of them all had increases except for six fifteen Main Street, and I, that is because of the snow, because our snow removal contract was so much different this year, it increased our expenses, which lowered our net position for that particular address. Our general fund was basically due to our operating grant and developer fees, and our non-operating interest is where that two point four million increase comes in our net position. And for housing choice vouchers, we were in a negative position in twenty twenty-one, and now we're in a positive, a lot of that is because of we were playing catch-up with our admin expenses. We had overspent. When we came on in twenty twenty, we had overspent way too much of our admin expenses, so we were playing some catch-up, and now we're, we're caught up, but we're trying to figure out how in the, in the long term, will we be able to bring an executive director on and be able to fund out both of our management fees and our H C V voucher in the council. And then last is our single audit findings, so we have four this year, we didn't have any financial statement findings, but we did have two H Q S inspection findings, they inspected out twenty files, they found that one had, didn't have an inspection before their certification was done, we fixed that in the system, there was what we call an adjunct technical inquiry that wasn't checked, and so basically that's now checked, that says you can't move forward with doing the certification until the inspection is done. So all of these have been corrected, the H Q S inspection for the second one was, there is a twenty-four hour requirement that if an inspection fails and is due to H Q S health and safety standards, that you have to do another inspection within twenty-four hours in the landlord. Tell me if I'm speaking well. The landlord has to get those corrections done within those twenty-four hours, and we did make that mark on that one.
We couldn't verify it, the consultant that we use for the inspections couldn't find the document that would show the twenty-four, that they were theirs, in her emails, so we couldn't prove that it was done within the twenty-four hours.
The next one was due to rent reasonableness, so when they go through certification, they have to print off a rent reasonableness, it's a particular part of the process, unfortunately for several of these files, they were, the H C V specialist knew they had to do that, but they were printing wrong document, so because we had to print the correct document during audit, we received a finding for that.
Could you tell me what that means, rent reasonable? So anytime that voucher person leases up for the first time, or if the landlord is going, is planning on raising the rent, we have to compare that unit to three other units in Longmont to make sure that the rent that they're charging is reasonable and comparable to the rest of the properties. And the staff member that was, was doing that was just printing it.
This was an interesting one, we actually had the right form and they did it right, they just printed out the wrong form and put it in there. And because they had to print it out at the time, they had the right of that.
And then the last one was our ARPA funding that we received, there was a reporting requirement that was missed, but was corrected during audit, and was submitted all of our quarterly reports that we had to, and is it on our compliance monitoring now, to get those fixed, to get those issued every quarter. So those are the four findings that we received, they've all been corrected, and we'll have a corrective, I mean, we'll have a corrective action plan that actually.
Commissioner Waters.
Well, you might have mentioned, I was going to ask, those are all labeled as, the causes of lack of internal control.
Yes.
For all four of those. And so the remedy is one thing, and then the corrective action is something else, so are, is there correspondence you, you are generating that outlines the corrective action?
Yeah.
Or do we have a copy of that?
Yes, yes. So for example, the first one would be our corrective action, we fixed Yardi to not allow that.
But there's got to be some documentation on this, I assume that will be part of that, will be dialed into that, where that corrective.
So if I can maybe turn that question sideways a little bit, is there a, a process amendment that's going to happen in training momentum, so that, because all of this was people making mistakes, how do you keep people from making mistakes? What changes have been made? I can address the H Q S stuff. We started, they weren't doing inspections during COVID nineteen, they were self-certified. So when we came in, they weren't using their module for H Q S inspections.
But in the L H A before us could go in.
Yeah, they weren't using that module, so we implemented it, and then there was an update, that, because they hadn't updated their, their Yardi system for several years, so then there was an update. And what that did is, when, when reports are, I ran them in, it wasn't capturing all the units that needed to be inspected, or all the problems that, that they saw here. And we're dialing that in, we've got, we're already looking at that module and trying to figure out why it's not pulling all of the information that we need in order to do the inspections correctly.
Would you spell Yardi in the binder?
Y A R I?
D I.
Yeah, Y A R D, and I don't know what that means, but it's a software that has issues.
It's a property management.
It's a property management software. And there's modules, there's, you know, the light tech module, there's the H C V module, there's the waiting list module, and then there's the H Q S inspection module. And so we're just getting into the H Q S module, and so we're going to work out some of the problems.
Part of the question, part of the answer is, on the other side, with the residents and certifications, one of the things they also didn't implement that we heard in the last advisory board meeting is really the online portal for landlords and voucher holders to utilize, which we're utilizing at Lower County. And so that's something we're looking at too, because we're trying to see if it's automated, because if you can automate it, then you can start minimizing some of those pieces. They've got a number for that, you know, I want to evaluate it in terms of what that means for staff time and some other issues, and that very well might be something that we're going to bring through more quickly, if we can verify that.
Good question, are the audits random, or do you all know in advance when they're coming to audit?
So they do a sample, so they have us give us their, so we'll give them several lists, you know, who are the new people, who are the, who's, what are all the failed inspections, and then they do a sample of that. And then we were given that prior, ahead of time, to get the files correct.
So do you all, one of the questions I have is, do you ever have a compliance vote in before the audits? And I know you all are super busy, but when you know there's an audit, do you go in and just review those files just to make sure, because that's very important, then you catch stuff like that, if the forms are, the documents are not right, then you can replace them and have them print them out correctly. So it is important to, if compliance can go in prior to the audit, to do a pre-audit beforehand, and then those eyes are captured beforehand.
And so, so I did. And so on the, which one? The document that she was printing out wrong, I didn't catch it, because it was the wrong, it was the wrong, so I didn't, I didn't catch that. I saw, saw that it was there, but it's the wrong. And the inspections that in twenty-four hours, we rely on consultants to have that, and we didn't, so now what we're going to do is have them send us the document, because they usually get just a picture or a report showing that like maybe a smoke detector was put on. So we're going to have them give that to us, and so we can attach it to the failed inspection, so that should take care of that.
What was that meant before?
The, the landlord would just send it to the consultant that does the inspections, and they would approve the twenty-four hour inspection, and then do another one and couple it into Yardi.
Not going through you?
No, no. They do, they do it on the handheld device, and then when they're done, and they upload it, and it goes into Yardi, and then it goes, supposed to go to the tenant's file.
That's so interesting, that is so interesting, I mean, because, now I'm just mentioning, this is so long ago since I was in housing, but they had, there was a separate housing inspection, H Q S inspection, but it was still part of the Housing Authority, but they had their own separate department, so that department, you know, and it's just, when you said consultant, that just blew my mind, like you have a consultant to go in and do what?
Well, like, it's a, it's a company that does H Q S inspections, and I think housing, older housing partners use it, uses them. And, and we had decided to use them, because when we walked in and the self-certifications that were done for a couple of years, we had to go in and do all of those inspections again.
Right.
And it was just, it was just too much. And I think it would be too much for the staff to do it right now, we've, we've gone through, we've got one person that's been here for a year, and now we're training the third person. Well, we've got two other people, and now we're training another person. So I think eventually it would be nice to be able to do it in-house, I do H Q S inspections, I do the quality control inspections, so there's a training there, that can happen, but we're just not here.
Hold on, do you have, maybe on the next slide, but do you have the comparison to the last audit, or is this all in stuff that you didn't do because of the?
We didn't have any last audit, so there's nothing to compare it to, we had zero findings last audit.
Okay.
This was a deep dive.
Is that, is that because, how long have we been, you know, just give me a speed, how long have we been the authority?
So last year was the first year that we had no findings, the year before that we had like four or five, we still have, we have a lot of financial statement findings along with some HUD findings, but a lot of what has also happened, there's been a lot of waivers these last couple of years, so they haven't had to test everything that they had to test this year. I do know the rent reasonableness was actually a finding on their side, with HUD, HUD told them they weren't doing their job in, in testing the rent reasonableness, so that was something added that might not have been tested in prior years, and it was tested this year. I think these are good to see where we do have breaks in the system, now that we're actually trying to utilize, to, I think we're paying for more, more features that we're not utilizing, but we need to have checks and balances and reports that are functioning correctly, because it wasn't being used correctly in the past. So that's what we're trying, I know she's working on inspections, and we're trying to get that.
Yeah, I think the goodness for me is that on the financial side, we didn't have any findings because of all the waivers, this is the first time we've really dug in since we've had it into this piece, based on what we were doing, and so, I mean, we're going, obviously learning from this. The ARPA, ARPA findings is actually interesting, because I think we did that to ourselves in that the money that we, we put in as the city contract going with Chrisman, we put a requirement for quarterly reports, that went in with Chrisman as a one-time fund, so in, in our minds it was spent because it went in, but because the project's not closed and the agreement that we created on our side requires quarterly reports, even though the money's spent and you're not doing anything with it, so that's another learning, more like for us, in the sense of if you're going to put the money in upfront, we need to think about how we write the agreement for the city on our side, on the city's side, to not create that issue to happen, so it's quarterly report that says we put the money in, but the project's not closed.
There's two observations, one is, having been in those conversations with L H A, starting the conversion, it is not a simple conversion, it is a major and complex software package. So the learning curve is steep, number one. Number two, everybody, the first thing I look at, I don't know, our letter to management, you know, whatever deficiencies, I mean, kind of that's what it's about, but, but not to focus so much on that, so much as, are we learning, we need to learn, but if you looked at the audits before, I don't know, nine findings, both non-compliance and financial issues, you know, to see the audit now compared to what it was, so Sean, just know, this is a likely improvement, what we are seeing.
We, we definitely think that this is the year that everyone says, okay, city, you've been with L H A now for going on three years, show us, show us what you've done, and so we're getting monitored heavily, everyone wants to see what things look like, this stuff is very much down to the crossing Ts and dotting Is, is, so.
I, I will also say that our auditors gave us a compliment that we have turned it, the housing board, like three sixty, because when they would show up, they would not even have files, they would even have.
One eighty.
One eighty. We're going to man drag. So, but I do think she said reasonableness. So they were able to actually draft our audit at the very end, and they've never actually ever had been able to do that.
Really?
So within the five days they were here, they had a draft audit in the very end, so...
As opposed to having to go and come back to?
Come back and, and follow up and follow up and follow up, because they weren't finding files, they were, you know...
That rarely happens, rarely.
So, yeah, so they haven't seen that. So, yeah, so they haven't seen that any Housing Authority. So that was kind of cool.
Yeah, just, you know, from a management perspective, this is what I want to see. Because as you're trying to dig in and now really get to the nuances and the details, you want to see it kind of get to this level, because now it's not surface level. You're digging down into the granular information, and so that, that's also good. And, and we're learning stuff about YARDI in this. It's like Tracy said, how do you fix it? You check a box. Well, that's a learning moment, and you're already in what you need to do. And like I said, on the ARBA, we created that ourselves based on our own contract. We knew that it was going to be spent on the front end of the project. So we're learning also how do we structure contracts when the money's just dropping in and then it's, it's gone.
So you see, they could be up there, and they, we would do, you know, internal audits, and then we'd have, we'd hire somebody to audit us, and then the federals would come in and audit us. And, and so the thing that you're talking about is, is we're just, is the federal coming in.
This was our outside audit.
Our outside audit.
Outside.
So financial, but because we get federal funds, we have an additional requirement that they have to do a single audit. And what the single audit is, is the White House basically does this compliance supplement every year and says you have to test on these certain things. So for every type of federal funding may come and they have to test them to make sure that we're compliant with what HUD wants us to be in compliance with that year.
So will you find something and fix it, they like that? And if you don't find something, but they find it, they like that too, I think, to a certain group, because they're, you know, whatever makes a little bit of a mistake is your, your learning curve. When this YARDI is coming on, you're getting better at that, I don't know, you're.
Yeah, and I would say even in years past, what they were seeing was the exact same findings over and over and over again. So they were doing corrective action plans, but nothing was getting corrected because they were still.
And your accountability for, for me, should be, we shouldn't see the same findings.
Right.
My accountability for them is we shouldn't see the same findings again, you guys.
You will see.
That gets into, that gets into systemic issues. And what you're trying to do, you're fixing the system as part of the audit itself.
You mentioned the tenants' files and, and the landlords' files too, because of the, are these paper files at the beginning and end of the process? You still, do you still need the paper?
That was a software that I talked about earlier, to look at doing a conversion to doing it online. We know that landlords like it a lot more.
When it's online.
When it's online, and we'll, we're hearing decisions as to which voucher to take based on that. We have recently been involved with residents that aren't physically able to update online. You always have somebody that you have to manage. And the thing that I'm most interested in, in this, is that when you automate it, I think there's inherent capacity building that occurs in, in the amount of time it takes staff to, to dig into each one of these files. So we're, we're evaluating that right now. I think Tracy sent me an email, it's 20,000-ish now, and then 31, 37, 35,000 year after that. So what we're trying to do is figure out financially how they could do that to start shifting into that money.
But that, that doesn't mean we won't have the paper files. Because when, when they come in and do the audit, they, they want to see the paper files. So we'll always have the paper files, but the tenants can come in and do all their paperwork online and submit it to us online instead of coming in and, and filling it out by hand and handing it to us. It will also cut down on misplacing files. You know, we get a lot of people that says, well, I came in and I, I turned it in and we say, well, we didn't. So it, it would be really helpful.
I'll add on to that. I don't think we know exactly fully what this package is capable of. So, so with that said, the auditors do have access to YARDI. They have, you know, access to be able to do, so if we can make it an online type of process, the auditors would have access to that, but we just don't.
So if somebody fills a form in my hand, does somebody in your organization have to transcribe it if you are? Or it doesn't?
No, the information that we get, I mean, there's, because it's a federal program, there's several documents that have to be signed every year.
Yeah.
And then income verification, and so a lot of, a lot of paperwork. And then they take that information, like the income verification, and they'll put that into YARDI. And that's where it will calculate the rents and.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, but that didn't answer my question. How much, how much cop, how much transcription from a paper form to an online?
We don't know, that's what we're exploring right now.
Yeah, but what's in your current process?
When they get the forms, what do they have to enter into YARDI?
Just the income and assets and, and any daycare and medical directions. It's the tenant that has to fill out all the paperwork and sign it. So they're the ones who have, it, it takes them a lot of time to get that document.
And my question is, after they've done that, what do you do? How do you go, like you have to?
So we take it, we make sure that all of the documents that, that are required is there. And then all they do is they take the income information, put that into YARDI.
Okay, so a fraction of those on that form.
Right.
I think what you're asking is, how, how, that you have to just basically go and put it in?
Yes.
For them, is that right?
Well, not, not for them.
But or into the system? Into the system, is there a possibility of somebody putting it in?
Yes, among other things, it's also just time that it takes.
Yeah, the more you automate, the more you start removing human elements in it. And that's what we want to assess in this new software company.
Thank you.
Does anybody have any more audit questions? That's my last slide.
Okay, that's it for the audit, okay. Any more? It looks like we've asked a lot of questions.
So can I have acceptance of the 2022 audit?
Sure.
Certainly.
All right, so Commissioner Martin moved acceptance of 2021, seconded by Commissioner McCoy. Let's vote, all those who can say aye.
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 All those who can. So that passes unanimously, thank you. I don't know what this next one means.
So they see them. So then, if you recall, in February, we submitted our CMAP, it's yearly.
Oh, right.
Form that, that we, we sent to HUD. And when we sent it out, we showed us at a 98%, which is a high performer. When they got it, they looked at, so when, so I'll have to explain. So when we do our documents in YARDI, we send them to HUD, through what we call PIC. And so it takes everything that we've done, and it sends it to HUD, and then HUD will look at it and, and check to make sure our numbers are correct.
Okay.
So we got a response from HUD, and it says that we went down from 98 to 92, which were still high performers. So, so what had changed on this is there's, there's 14 indicators. And the continuing to do HQS inspections went down to zero. We showed that we were doing them. So, so their information that they have in PIC shows that we're not doing them every two years like we're supposed to. And what we're finding is that the reports that we're, we're generating in order to show us what inspections need to be done are missing. Files. We don't know why, it's kind of random. So YARDI is looking, we've got a ticket in, and they're, they're looking at those ones that aren't posting to PIC.
So to kind of break it down, the files are in the YARDI system. They're not leaving the YARDI system and getting into PIC, or it's not consistent. So it's a, this is our frustration with this.
It's HUD's.
Yes.
It's HUD's system. So our frustration is, we have forms. It's not automatically shifting in, and so HUD's not seeing. And, and so that's what we're trying to resolve actually with the software company, to figure out why those forms, when they process it, aren't going through.
Can you see them in YARDI?
I can see.
The missing ones?
I can, I can see the inspections.
Yeah.
I can see the inspections when you do, when you do the, the PIC report, what it does is it takes those inspections and it throws it into the tenant's file. So then you can look in the tenant's file and see the, see the inspection. Well, it's not throwing it into the tenant's file. We can, we know that the inspection was done because we have, we have the inspection. But it's not taking it from the approval of the inspection and sending it to, I don't know how.
Yeah, we can manually pull them out.
Yeah.
We can manually pull the inspections, it's not shifting them out when we're getting buttons to do it.
So unfortunately HUD's processed, they don't call us and say, I don't see anything. They just gave us a zero, and then certified it. And we said, um, can we appeal that? Because this is a technical issue, we have a ticket. They said, no, because you're already a high performer, so there's no reason to appeal, you'll just still be a high performer. So we can't appeal our score because we're already at the right threshold. But from a perfectionist point of view, and also just fairness, we wanted to. But at this point, we can just tell them how we're correcting it via the YARDI ticket.
Well, and one, one other thing is the lease-ups. There was a calculation that we had done, and, and we put ourselves down as a zero. We didn't get any, any points for that because we still weren't leased up. Well, they said that we were leased up and gave us 20 points. So, so yeah, we were leased up. So Kendra and I had talked to HUD about our two-year tool, and we talked about this. And, and they are, like the auditors, they are very, very pleased with how, how we're doing, especially with our lease-up. We're above average.
Yeah, she said, we haven't seen that in a long time.
Oh, that's great.
So we, we're, we haven't fixed YARDI yet, but YARDI is looking at it and we, you know.
It sounds like YARDI is trying to fix you all.
It has, it has.
I guess the 360.
I'd say that I don't think it was set up for success. It wasn't set up in 2018 successfully. So there, and with them out, with them not doing the upgrades for, like, we just did it this year, so we've been messing since 2018 for years.
So, YARDI was so bad. When we took it over, the, the H, Council of Warders may remember this. They were still going into the old system to process HCV applications. I don't even know if you all know.
Yeah, it's on my computer, I've been trying to get it.
So, and, and that may be some of what we're seeing, is that they were still doing work in the old system, and they didn't fully migrate.
They didn't fully, yeah, they didn't fully migrate and they just didn't set it up successfully.
And we found, you know, like there's, there's several files that they have the wrong social security number. The way that YARDI works is they had, the, the client is tracked by social security. So they had the wrong social security number, so then they changed it. Well, that made a new file. And they didn't delete the old one, so now, so those are showing up as not being inspected, because of course, they're not, it's a different.
They're not there.
So, so those are the kind of things that we have to clean up.
And that's an error by the YARDI software that we had for seven years ago. Shouldn't have done that.
That's the name of the, it's a term of war. We were trying to work out and pay in the, we were, you know, the other, the authority. Voluntary compliance. You had to, you leaned into that, this is before we did, what's the status of the voluntary?
We have completed everything on the list that was due. Our last word from HUD in February was, thank you, we'll check out the last deliverable and we'll let you know. And I've been totally quiet.
That, you just said, no, that, I don't remember the number of pages of findings. It was staggering. The, the anticipated costs were overrun, and it looked like the end of the authority. I mean, the, the challenge of working it out was, there was, I thought you had no, no capacity to work this out. It was part of the motivation, taking on the authority. So, I mean, you just got to understand how far it's come since those moments we tried to work out this voluntary. It was, it was frightening at the time.
Well, part of the closure is the CDV chief funds on the accessibility issues, that's, that's the last beat, right?
Actually, so the, the actual capital project is not required by the VCA, but it is related, where we did that physical accessibility survey and made sure we had a plan for the next seven years of capital.
Do you get fined if you're on the compliance?
Not, we did not get the VCA. Is there fines related to, I don't think so. It's just, they're, HUD's processes, they do findings, they can recapture funds. That has not happened.
I was just looking at the past, LHA.
So what can happen is HUD can come in, and if it's not working, they can put Housing Authorities into receivership, which I've actually seen a few times. And they basically come in and take it over and redo things. For those of you that were here when we, to Council of, Commissioner Waters' perspective, this voluntary compliance agreement, we actually stepped in before we were involved and helped facilitate a conversation with HUD to not go 100 miles an hour on this one to do the voluntary compliance agreement. What we subsequently found out from a conversation with HUD is, they, they told us we were getting ready to kind of talk to the city to step in on this.
Oh, really?
Yeah, so that's kind of, the dominoes were falling, and we just stepped in at a different time. They avoided maybe some of those, and got hit with them. But stepped in at a point before we got to the most significant, actually.
Amazing. So do we need to do anything on the HCV program or CMAP? It's just a, a verification? Okay, the project-based voucher request?
This is, I'll take this one, this is an informational update as well. We plan on, so if you recall, back in February, we opened up our project-based voucher, request for proposals period for senior housing. And then in, in March, we went ahead and awarded that to the Village Place Project, Village On Main Project. So we are now opening up a second round, up to 18 vouchers focusing on family housing. And we do know we'll have at least two applicants. One will be the Hoover Project, and one will be a, a privately operated affordable housing development. It's also trying to go for tax credit. So this is just a heads up that we plan to open that up on Friday. It'll be open through June 30th, and then you all will consider that in July, the award. That's just a heads up, because there's a, it's very process-driven and a lot of HUD requirements behind it. So it's just information.
Great.
Yes.
Okay. So returning it over to you, Harold, you're.
Okay, I'm going to try to move pretty quickly through our updates. First thing I wanted to talk about is, you know that we've been moving through a number of additions during the last one, and I'll have you briefly give you the details, but Judge Martin expressed praise and thanks on the team approach to avoid eviction and one of the individuals we're dealing with. Can you really quickly, at a high level, work through what we've heard?
Well, Judge Martin was just impressed how, along with Housing Authority, our attorneys, the long mediation services that the city sponsors, all can get together. And he's seen it all, so many cases that we can sit down and actually have a conversation that we're not. all can get together and he's seen it all, so many cases that we can sit down and actually have a conversation that we're not, we're, we're getting the apartment back today. We will negotiate with the tenants, uh, one of the cases that he was referring to this last week is they, they need to go. But we sat there and went back and forth mediation about four or five times between their attorneys, our attorneys, mediation services, and really came up with a plan that was workable for the family, so that they had adequate time to be out and also much time terms that we needed.
Um, so that's kind of the work that you can do on the city is these, these processes that we have to go through are extremely tight and, um, and, and one of the things that, that we're doing, we have the fair housing training that's coming out.
June twentieth.
So one of the things that when we're dealing with all of these issues is the, the number of requirements that we have to manage. So first can we, you know, say first in front of us, all of the fair housing rooms are front and center for us anytime we're dealing with a situation. And, and that's really the holy grail in terms of how we have to deal with it. Um, the, the second piece, we don't touch ADA issues, um, which can cover anything from physical disabilities and, um, sort of reasonable accommodations, which actually was one of the things that started the voluntary compliance agreement. Was the lack of reasonable accommodations in terms of dealing with ADA issues, so that, you know, front and center, so we have to um, work with all of those components, so you, you know, the time, you can see the time commitment that you're dealing with in terms of when you have a situation and how you can throw it, developing the documentation, but even up to when they go into actual court for eviction, there's a lot of work that even occurs at that point. So, um, I mentioned this to you all before, we have a lot of, we do everything we can to keep people housed because, you know, the issue just gets magnified when they're not housed. Um, monitoring trends for us, um, you kind of get a sense of what we just talked about, but, um, A, I think one of the things that none of us realized when we took it over is these organizations, uh, housing authorities are monitored to the tenth degree. Um, and, and that's because you get monitored by HUD, you get monitored by investors, you get monitored by DOL, um, you get monitored by CHAF.
The mortgage companies.
Mortgage, I mean, so everybody's monitoring you and I think what we're experiencing now to the point that Molly made earlier is they're digging in, uh, because they're like, okay, let's really see how you're doing. And so we're, we're just continuing to be in that, um, monitoring phase. They're also catching up on the COVID backlog, as we talked about earlier, a lot of things are required to be monitored, uh, but they're now requiring those. And, um, anytime you get into it to the point that, um, Commissioner Yarborough made earlier, we're bringing in almost the entire staff internally, getting files ready and, and working to, to make sure that everything's ready and available, uh, for the monitoring. Um, we talked a little bit last time about the, uh, regional voucher program impacts. Um, Boulder County Housing Authority and Boulder Housing Partners are raising payment standards. Um, and so we're looking at that because that really could impact us in terms of, um, whether or not landlords will accept our vouchers, what's interesting, what we're seeing is that at this point, we're not seeing people denying our voucher holders, they're taking it. But what we're hearing, I think, from our counterparts in the county and Boulder Housing is that they're having trouble with an uptake in vouchers because of, assuming it's because of the rent levels and where it's set. Um, and so we're watching that to really understand what's going on, we'll probably talk more to you about this. Um, we're just now, as we talked about earlier, growing and gaining HUD funding increases. The housing authority hadn't had increases for a significant number of years on housing choice vouchers, we're now starting to see them. Therefore, we didn't have as much of an increase as Boulder and Boulder County during that process coming into this. That really is performance related, I think, I mean, a big part of the performance related is the number of vouchers that you actually have out. And we talked about before, the number was four twenty, the number now is four thirty, correct?
Um, by the end of the year, we should be.
Four forty. So you're seeing us being able to have more vouchers out, um, even though five twenty is a limit, as we're managing it with the two-year tool, that's what's allowing us to do that. So, um, watching it pretty close. You know, one of the things that we can say is the regional relationships and the impact of the Longmont community. Uh, we are seeing that starting to show itself as we're probably absorbing, um, more vouchers than any other community uh, in, in the county, we're digging into some numbers, um, to really understand what that impact is and we'll be back to you all to present that information once we get it, but I do think we're taking a lot of vouchers, or we have a lot of voucher holders from Boulder County and Boulder, and Boulder Housing Partners that are actually renting, using the vouchers in Longmont. And then we're also going to look at mental health partners who receive state vouchers as well to get a better sense of the number of voucher holders that we have in our community.
So can I, I have a question, does that mean that we are getting more people moving into our community with vouchers, maybe from another place?
Correct, so the way the state refers in agreements that dated back to nineteen eighty-nine, eighty-seven, eighty-nine to where the respective groups said that if somebody has a voucher from Boulder County and they utilize it in Longmont, you're not going to engage in the portal process, reporting the vouchers over, putting it in there. Unlike if somebody has a voucher from Ludlin Housing Authority and they come to Longmont, we have a choice as to whether or not you want to port that voucher into our system. There's financials associated with it, admin fees, you don't necessarily get all of them, but you at least have a choice to do that. So what you have is basically within Boulder County, this free form flowing of vouchers in and out of different communities. And, and so, um, that's what we're trying to figure out. And, and exactly how many are coming in, from where, and, and what does that look like?
Could it be because they're not building as much housing for the people?
Um, I would say that, potentially be an issue. I think the, the rental cost in those other communities is probably the most significant issue as a whole, the rental cost. Um, I think when we look at our rental numbers, we're starting to see some draft information coming in in terms of the housing report. And our rental fees are lower than they are in Boulder and, and other places within Boulder County, so it's a combination of the amount of units, the rental rates, and so we want to get a little more depth in this when we bring it back to you, but, you know, it wouldn't surprise me if we say we have four hundred and forty at the end of the year, we're going to be able to, to issue. Um, based on some numbers that I'm seeing that we've got to verify, I would expect that there's potentially more vouchers coming in from outside of Longmont than we have in total. And that's a different conversation that we have to figure out, Molly and I are going to try to figure it out and start having these conversations with others. Um, Prop one twenty-three is something that we're looking at, this is one of these weird ones because it, it impacts the housing authority. Um, but the city has to do it, I will say, I think it's an advantage of having the structure we have because we can look at it from a different perspective versus just purely, uh, a municipal perspective that's not a housing authority. And so I'm going to ask you a question that, this house, it's the Housing Authority Commission, but would you like to see this as the city council? So, um, we do think that the housing authority, we really think the community will greatly benefit from Prop one twenty-three funds. Um, we have to submit the commitment for LHA Habitat in between, um, to participate in a portal that just opened, uh, a few days ago and also the city, right?
So the city has to commit in order for any other agency, including the housing authority, to request funding to use in the city funds?
Um, so we're working on some baseline selections to really get us, give us a chance to understand the numbers and wanted to know if you would like us to consider commitment parameters as a council before we, we submit it. Would you want to see the commitment parameters as the council before we submit to the state to participate?
Before you submit as the city to participate?
Yeah, we can submit as staff, but because it's impacting the housing authority and it's other, would you like to see it in your other, with your other hat on?
Yeah, it would be very interesting to see what we're submitting.
That's, development or knowledge?
Oh, I can do, yeah. So moving to development updates, um, we wanted to have a couple of quick ones. One is just a, a heads up that on June sixth, the city council will, um, see an informational item describing this in more depth. But, um, the plan right now that we're moving forward with is to go ahead and use two point one million dollars of ARPA funds to purchase the former Royal Lovable Home Park property out of the Storm drainage fund and house it in the Affordable Housing Fund. Um, which is an eligible ARPA expenditure. Uh, the, the price is two million dollars, that's a negotiated price based on, um, the resident property, what is left for development, um, and the work still required to get that ready to develop and also the appraised value, it's kind of the middle ground there. And then it includes an extra one hundred thousand dollars just for storm drainage staff to keep maintaining it, since LHA doesn't have that function really built in. That would just be nice to have that, um, maintained as it is until we're ready to develop it. Um, the other thing is we're planning on keeping it in the Affordable Housing Fund for now, not moving it to LHA, onto the LHA's books for the moment. Because there's so much going on with First and Main Transit Station redevelopment, we just want maximum flexibility to see if there's, there's some sort of mixed, um, use that could happen there, it would still be affordable housing, but that is the plan for that. So when you see that on our LHA goals, it might be housed within the city for the time being.
So is that the one in Boston, uh, across from the materials?
Yeah, budget home.
Yeah, budget home, yeah.
Part of that is also when you drop the land into these deals and when you take, we talked about it today, when you take possession, it impacts everything. It's just cleaner to hold it in the affordable housing by knowing that we're going to use it for LHA, which is why we wanted to talk to you all about this.
So we're holding the asset?
Yes.
Yes.
It would be considered an asset of the Affordable Housing Fund?
Yes.
Kind of cash?
Correct.
Knowing that we're gonna at some point transfer something, we'll be on the housing.
And reimburse the rest of the money.
Yes.
That will happen right away, yeah. So when you see that project on your LHA goals, that's just, um, how it's gonna stick for the, for the time being.
Didn't you at one time say you were, you were looking at that as a tenor?
No, that was always affordable, so when we, when we purchased, um, going back to the flood, this, this goes all the way back to the flood in that we knew we needed the property for the channel expansion. And then we talked to the council at that time about utilizing it for affordable housing. We were trying to figure out how we would give the dollars to do it, or if we're using the ARPA funds, but in terms of looking at First and Main as that's now moving along, you know, we have an alignment. And so there may be more that we can do to, to really figure out what's the most advantageous way to leverage that for, for housing in the broad scheme of First and Main and it's, they're transit oriented in the long term.
Okay, great.
Uh, the next one is.
Yes.
Oh, sorry, got you.
That, what that provokes me is a simple question, you laid out for us an overall plan for use of ARPA funds some fourteen months ago. Uh, it would be, it would be useful given what you just said, at least from my perspective, if we could get an update on how is that, how we deated from or how consistent, or what does our actual expenditure of that ARPA fund look like compared to what those priorities were eighteen months ago?
Would you like to see that as an LHA update or as the city council's?
Whatever, I just, I just think it would be useful. I couldn't, honestly, I couldn't, especially if what you just said, I'm not certain I can answer the question you asked. Where are we relative to what the plan was that we approved, I'm just not yet.
Sure. Um, so the next one, I wanted to update on the Affordable Assisted Living. So these, both of these two projects are, are further planned out ones, they're not necessarily totally active at the moment, we're just planning ahead for them. And that is our, that's the biggest lift on our ARPA project list that is LHA related. Because it's just, it's a big undertaking and it's a specialty type of project. So we've done a ton of research already about development partners and, and ways to do this. Um, but given the ARPA funding, wanting to spend that as quickly as possible, just to safeguard it in case somebody, yes, in case, um, somebody considers recapturing. We are considering, um, whether we go ahead and try and search and do a land banking process and maybe hold land. We have to, of course, talk about with some development potential, or at least our development consultants that can advise on this. If we hold that land, would that still be advantageous to a future deal? But in order to get the ARPA funds spent, that is something we could do, um, and have it spent this year. So that's something we're gonna research and look into as an option and then pick up the development when we're actually ready, capacity wise and, and ready to take on the next one. I was gonna move to Zinnia unless there's questions on that one?
Yeah, we don't.
Um, so Zinnia, we already mentioned the closing is coming up, we're in the final push. Um, compared to Crispin, which happened in June this, just about this time last year. You'll probably remember, it was a lot of documents flying around at the very last minute. We definitely paced it out much more, there's still in the end, a couple that are flying around at the last minute, but, um, not does the volume of Crispin. Um, I just wanted to kind of reflect on what has gone well with this one, especially considering that this is our second full go at this, um, Crispin being the first. Uh, we plan to head well on our timelines, um, we've had really creative solutions for filling gap funding. And our relationship with our partner element has been really productive and, um, and positive. Does it, I'm just being brief, but the challenges, uh, the utilities and the easements at this location just were a real challenge. It is chock full of utilities, so that presented, um, challenges in the entitlement process and making sure we got design, approved in time for building permits and, um, getting easements and vacations and everything sorted here towards the end. And then this is also our first time as a third party property manager, so this was the, a potential model that the LHA could use going forward for non-LHA owned properties to, um, manage them and collect fees for that management service. And so we really dug in deep on that management agreement, which is what you'd be considering as the city council next May twenty-third. Um, because we really wanted to get it right, as far as we could project, not ever having done one of these to date. So, um, that turned out to be pretty, pretty in-depth, making sure we've got a staffing plan and how are we going to, um, manage the bank accounts and financials and who's doing what and a lot of arranging of responsibilities and negotiation of, um, of, of, you know, our return on this. So that was, it was productive and positive and we're getting there, but it was a big lift to make sure that we were trying to consider the future as much as possible. So that's what I'd say on Zinnia, that's almost kind of a closing, closing statement on Zinnia. Um, for Hoover, so first of all, we're at the point where we need to decide a name for the Hoover development. The, the one that has risen to the top of the development partnership team so far is Ascent at Hoover Crossing. But Ascent, A-S-C-E-N-T, um, because A, it's, it's kind of a mountain theme and the Harston Lodge are kind of, you know, rustic mountain feels as well, but then we're gonna have pretty good mountain views on that top couple floors. And then really it's about the people living there where it's, it's a, you know, a stepping stone to improve in your life and, um, just an upward trajectory. So that was the proposal so far, so unless, unless it is, um, objected to by this board, then that's what we would move forward with. Do you have any feedback on that? Any other any ideas, where it's always welcome? Anything?
Sounds like a graphic company or something.
I, there's a lot of Ascent things, so we had to like Google it to make sure that it wasn't gonna get confused with something else, but, um, there was a property called Ascends, but then they changed their name to Alpine, so, um, it doesn't seem like there's anything directly comparable in Longmont so far. Um, we are probably in the, by, probably by the end of May, we're trying to draft up those partnership documents so that some of them can come to you with a consideration at the June fourth meeting.
It's not Hoover.
It's not Hoover. We were trying to, so we were doing kind of plants and flowers at the Sunset Campus, so we didn't want to go. We were trying to, so we were doing kind of plants and flowers at the Sunset Campus, so we didn't wanna go too far into plants. Um, so it, it's really interesting. The marketing team of our development partner came up with the, the ideas. Um, while you think about that, you can always get back to us with ideas. The land transfer, so, um, your board approved the purchase and sale agreement at one of your most recent meetings. We are planning on having that land closed by next Friday, the twenty-sixth at the latest, hopefully a little bit sooner. But we're trying to sort out some, some, uh, clear some title, title, uh, exceptions to just make sure we have everything moving straightforward. So that will be occurring and then the land will be held by LHA at that point. And then we would, um, be working on a purchase option agreement to the development partnership that they would want in play for the tax credit application on this first. So that would be coming back to you as well. Um, we're continuing to look for gap funding, make sure we've got our, our funding plan set for August tax credit application, including for the ECE. Um, we're doing final design, concept design, um, to the point that you need for a tax credit application. So that's pretty exciting seeing some of those, um, visuals come together. And we'll, we'll, once they're a little more flushed out and have color on them, we'll bring them back so you can see them as well. Um, it will be a big lift through the summer because of that August first tax credit application goal. And yeah, that's actually everything I have for Hover. If there's any questions on that one?
That's an exciting one as well.
And then finally for Village on Main, um, we're completing our third party design review and budget prioritization process right now. Uh, so we hired actually a, a third party owners rep, which has been really helpful just to help us, um, work that prioritization and, and schedule out how we're gonna, um, plan for, you know, cost escalation. How do we plan ahead for that? And then, um, prioritizing what to do now on your initial budget and what to save for contingency and how to work this all. So that's been, um, really productive. And we've hired our relocation team as well. Um, we've hired a firm that we worked with for all seven years of our, well, it's actually been ten years. But we worked for, for seven of the ten years of the CDBG DR Flood Recovery Program and they really know what they're doing. And they're gonna help us, um, uh, work, uh, coordinate all of our resident temporary relocations. And we're gonna get them into, we're working on a contract right now and we'll get them in to start working with residents here this summer. And finally, doing final gap funding. So, uh, both, I should say, both Hover and Village on Main were selected, recommended by the advisory board, the Housing and Human Service Advisory Board, to receive, um, affordable housing funds and, and/or CDBG funds. So the city council will consider that in June, but, um, that's all in process between the city side and the LHA side. So that's everything I have for development.
Um, the only thing I wanted to say, um, you know, so you kind of heard us go through audits, high level. Um, briefly turn it over to Lisa to talk and Kendra if there's anything you need to cover on the numbers already good.
I have three reports here.
Okay. So they'll quickly go over, but when we talked about all of this, um, to give you a sense, the development team at Boulder County Housing, they have, they finished the spoke on Kaufman and then they're starting Little E Quarter, based on senior. Uh, and that's, yeah, right. And then going to be multifamily in May of twenty twenty-three, kind of get a sense of the development we're doing. Uh, as we talk about this work, um, I wanted you all to think about this piece of it. Obviously, there's tax dollars going into this, but when we compare staffing levels, they have fifty-five staff members, nine managers and an executive director. So if you get a sense of the bulk of work, they have nine hundred vouchers, we have four hundred and fifty, so roughly half. Um, nine hundred-ish vouchers. And so when you look at just kind of scope of work and, and, and kind of the press this team's under, you can get a sense that it's more in some cases significantly smaller staff in terms of what we're doing. And that's the piece that we're bridging in with the, with the city in terms of the projects. And so kind of wanted to throw that out at the end to say, here's the world and here's what we're doing it with. Um, now we're doing it different. I mean, we're not self-performing these projects. We're leveraging public private partnerships, which I think is the best way to do because you can do more and faster. And, and so there is a distinct difference in, I think this group is handling capacity. If we had five more people in this group, we would be pulling the doors off of our competitors, just based on what I'm seeing with you now. Next.
Is that an approval?
No, no, unfortunately, 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 you know, we're still struggling with the financial issues that we inherited. And so, you know, we're, we're tactically adding as we continue to move forward in the budget processes. But that's why you see us pressing the development as far as we're pressing it, because that's gonna generate revenue. Partnerships generate, I mean, a lot of what we're focusing on is revenue generation because there's just not enough revenue generation.
We are adding four units at a pretty good clip here. Heard recently from a, a Boulder city person that they were stuck at eight percent of units being affordable so far. Do we have that number? What percent of our, of our total?
Of our twelve? Six and a half. We're at six and a half.
But it depends. When you look at the state numbers and you look at naturally occurring affordable units, I think our percentage is much higher, which actually connects to the voucher issue. And this is why we're trying to figure all of this stuff out. We would have never have understood the voucher issue of just being the city without being in the LHA to start seeing things. So depending on how you look at it, we only count the affordable units that we build.
Permanently de-restricted at, at certain affordability levels.
Right, and that was more restrictive. The reason I ask the question is because there were at least two answers, naturally occurring included and the ones we know we default, that are restricted. So the six and a half is deep restricted. We haven't kept, attempted to count the naturally occurring.
That's what we're seeing in the state data.
Yeah, that's all pulled from census information and average rents and, um, so.
I don't know what our percentages, because that's really the level we committed to, right?
So that's, that's an option. When we're talking about the Prop one twenty-three commitment, that is an option, using their data. But one thing that we're finding, and we've been talking to our regional partners as well, is if you use just the census data, what the state has provided as an option in our market, then a lot, they're counting our naturally occurring affordable, but we really don't have control over what that does in the future.
But it stays affordable.
Right. So if our prices continue to go up and it leaves that naturally affordable market, no matter how many units we generate and call our deep restricted, the things that we count, then we will never meet that baseline if, so we, we can't predict exactly what would happen in that incident.
We'll bring this back to you because it's a maddening, it's, it's a maddening conversation right now. And so we'll bring it back and explain it. So yeah, we could theoretically be at nine percent affordability if you include naturally affordable, but you can't guarantee that it's gonna stay there.
Right, right. And I was actually not talking about Prop one, two, one, two, three, but, but the twelve percent commitment we made in twenty seventeen.
Same kind of issue. We can't guarantee that it'll stay there. So you could, if you count it in the twelve percent, you could drop it.
So both Boulder and Longmont count, permanently de-restricted affordable units. Because those are the ones that we have control over. So we could, if someone is about to leave, um, exit its deed restriction or age out, then we can go there. And we have ways to track that. We don't have ways to track and manage all of the naturally affordable.
But it needs to be recognized to a certain extent when we look at this as a whole, and that's what we're trying to try to figure out.
Right, and then so we could do the other side of that on this. Isn't there a housing needs assessment on its way?
Yeah, that's, that's.
June twenty-seventh. We'll bring them in. They're gonna come in to a presentation for council over our results.
What, Kendra, you ready?
Yeah, me. I don't know if it's letting. Well, you guys all have this on your desk, because I'm pretty sure. You're not gonna be able to see that. So, um, we do have, um, quite an outstanding balance of our past two tenants. Um, within the next couple of months, we are in fact have a meeting with my accountant next week. We are gonna start transitioning the, some of these over to collections, um, at which they get written off our books. So we'll be bringing approvals, um, on your end to get those written off. Um, they'll proceed through collections for a period of time if we can collect on them. Um, we do do a pretty high percentage of allowance on most of these because we know with it being affordable housing and more income, it's gonna be really hard. We'll see some of those money come back unless we have judgments. Um, and we do have some judgments, um, for payment, but not, not enough. Um, so that's what's gonna happen here. I mean, you have, um, right now, our current tenants, we have about fourteen thousand, um, dollar balance. So the biggest pieces are, um, past two and a lot of it is on meth units that are occurring, meth units and eviction units. And then the legal costs along with the, the cost to restore units.
That gives reminding, we got our first test system in and so we're now at, we're now work, working through that one to understand how it works and all those issues.
How do you test it without possessing that?
So if, based on how they're describing how it works, if we have a unit that tests positive and we have the industrial hygienist number, then we will take it into that unit, obviously with personal protective equipment. And then see what the number is that it generates and compare, and compare it to, to that piece.
So the next are the financials. Um, what I've done is I highlighted those areas, um, of concern. Um, so we have Aspen Meadows Neighborhood, um, we have Senior Apartments. These are basically that we're over fifty percent of our annual vacancy that we're extending by our, um, just for our score. Um, and I know Lisa, we don't, um, in on, in where their vacancy rates are at today. Um, but for those, those instances right there, um, we're getting over fifty percent of our vacancy already. So if it continues, we're gonna, we're gonna over extend that. And then what happens there is, if you're not getting that money in, then you're not getting the management fees which pay for the admin. Um, I mean, it's just a trickle down effect. The peak are just, um, insurance proceeds. So obviously these two, um, areas have, um, meth units. I believe AMSA and Arger have both meth units and we're working through the insurance proceeds on those. Um, for the Lodge, Spring Creek and the Suites, we have the same situation. The Suites has several claims, um, that we have insurance proceeds coming in on. Um, and some of these were also, um, continuance of last year's claims. Um, we do have, oh, these yellow ones. Sorry, I can barely see the yellow. So these yellow ones, um, these are over seventy, seventy-five percent annual vacancy. Um, so we've hit seventy-five percent of what we budgeted for vacancy, um, at both the Lodge and the Suites. Um, so those are getting extremely tight. And in fact, you know, the Suites is at eighty-two percent and the Lodge is at ninety-six. Um, so we gotta, and I know they've started outreach, um, not just going to the wait lists and starting to advertise because we're having issues with certain properties based on the percentage of AMI that is just too high for some of these people. That one's at fifty or sixty percent. So we're having to outsource outside of our waitlist, um, to get these units housed.
So people are on the waitlist, but they can't afford the units and so you're renting them to somebody else. Is that what's happening?
It's because of, like, if they, if they had a voucher, it'd probably be very easy to rent a fifty percent unit. But what they have to tell them is that the fifty percent unit is at this rental rate. Can you afford that? And they'll say no. So if, they can't even, you know, at that rental rate because they don't have a voucher or it's not a PDB unit, um, that type of thing. So we're having to outsource to different agencies to see if they have anybody, um, outside that can.
And what if, if people are, people down the waiting list might have vouchers even though their first person doesn't?
They've reached out to, so my understanding is they go, they've exhausted all of those.
Whole waitlist.
All the whole waitlist. And then they even went and looked at other properties. So if somebody was on the waitlist for Fall River, they would contact them and say, hey, we have a unit at AMSA. It's a fifty percent unit. Would you want to take it? And, you know, I mean, Diana said she reached out for AMSA to like fifty-five different people. And we finally just had to outsource it because, um, we're getting in a point where our debt to income ratio, um, might not pass the loan covenants that are required. So that's a new thing, new, new thing I found that was, because get, we're being monitored on the loan side for AMSA.
And I think that's the minimum wage because they, they're.
Well, this is an age restricted unit, so.
So security can't make it.
Yeah, there's so many issues and that's related to how it's financed via the light tax and the chat hook piece. In terms of if it's a fifty percent A value, then we may have to start evaluating based on where we are. The problem, can you get someone in it? The problem is that creates a snowball effect down the road, so.
And there, um, the waiting list, when they come in to put their name on the waiting list, Diana is explaining the programs and, and what the rent is. And I think what was happening was people were putting their name on the waiting list thinking it was gonna be thirty percent of their income. Um, even though their income supported that amount, they couldn't actually afford that amount. So we're trying to upfront, let them know what this program is.
Um, for, um, so for LHA, um, the only, the only thing is we're, we're over in some administrative expenses on six fifteen main, but that's because we also had an appraisal done, um, so we can have some information to, to say. Um, and then LHDC had some additional income and that was due to the, um, exit of the investor at Village Place. Um, LHA loaned LHDC money to get the investor, because you wanna get the investor out before you go into certification. Um, they, we were very fortunate that they knocked our exit tax in half. So we're gonna pay two hundred and one thousand dollars, but that will get paid back to LHDC, which will pay back LHA in the closing of Village on Main. So that's kind of first quarter in the nutshell. Listen, if anybody has any questions. Other than that, we're pretty much within twenty-five percent, twenty-five to twenty-eight percent on those stuff. Um, expenditures are, because that we were expecting, which is our, that's.
Do you feel like the, that you're outsourcing of, of these enough? Is, is, is it gonna like be able to take you back from the brink on the, um, income?
Um, I don't think not that. Um, what I think might is maybe the increase in vouchers that's going to one hundred and five percent as we start to increase those vouchers as they go through certification. That makes pushing the, the vacancies we're seeing. Um, but I don't know what we put on AMSA through. I mean, we had five units all at fifty percent, um, at the end of March.
So four of them are now.
No, April.
So four of them are now rented and just two are rented.
And all, all for outsourcing?
All for outsourcing.
Ah, so that's very good. And now you're saying if you get five more vouchers, that's five more people we can afford these.
Were they vouchers? I believe so because we went to, um, Longmont Senior Services and we let them know, hey, if you have people looking, we have immediate opens, openings if they can support this rent or have a voucher we can get. or have a voucher, we can get them in.
So my last is the voucher count. Um, at twelve one twenty-two, we were at four oh five. We've been trying to get to four twenty for a really long time, but it's like a roller coaster ride. People get off, we get thrown, um, or they're losing their vouchers. Um, we've finally reached in April, um, four hundred of building vouchers. And we currently have, um, three that were leased at the very end of the month. Um, so we will see those represented in, in, in May. And then we have eight on the waitlist. So we're at about four hundred and forty-one, um, and that's where we plan to be by the end of the year as we start to voucher. And we have pretty much the two-year tool pretty down to a sign. So, um, they, we are getting like attrition rate, which is being like people leaving the program on a monthly basis. It's about ten percent, so it's almost like four to five vouchers on one, um, we're actually losing. Um, so Tracy and her team are keeping up on that, and that's what wasn't happening. So we were losing vouchers, but they weren't reissuing those. So then, when they don't reissue those, you're still looking for these five that have already been issued, but now you really should be ten. So they, they, they got, they got it going.
We got it going.
So, yeah, and we did get four hundred thousand extra dollars, um, this year for half funding. And that will cushion the, the four forty that we can go up to along with the hundred and five percent of increase to Fair Housing. To a hundred and five percent.
And the more we lease up, the more admin, admin costs that we, um, we do.
For vouchers.
For vouchers.
We want the occupancy reports. So we, we ended April still at ninety-three percent, but I just pulled the numbers, and the last will be, my team, last time, I reported we changed how we were doing the waitlist, um, we're keeping them open. We're, we have Diana, the admin, calling all those and helping to pre-fill those. Um, pulling the numbers right before this meeting, we are projected to end the month at ninety-seven percent. Most of these units have been leased across the board, like we talked about Aspen Senior. Um, but most of them were at least from the waitlist. Even the Suites have a couple of their down units, one's down for flood, one's down for meth, both projected to be done by the end of the month, are already leased and ready to go. So been very active on our side. For, uh, meth units, we did add two new units this month at the Briarwood. We have two that came in positive, and, um, that's where our occupancy is. Any questions on occupancy? And then just a quick overview of the property updates. Um, one thing that's not on here is we are having our annual fair housing training that you're all invited to. We'll have, um, our fair housing trainer out of Denver, Kama West. He's a great trainer. It's June twentieth, from eight-thirty to eleven-thirty, and we'll be doing it in the chambers.
Are you happy to sit down, Linda?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Uh, we held single de-mio events the whole first week of May at all the properties, and it was amazing. Uh, my staff is sick of chicken, but it was nice. We had the dancers from Lawn Not Senior Services show up at one of the properties, a magician at another, singers at another. So it was quite active at a lot of the properties where they, you know, pull on events. Great turnout. We tried to guess the numbers of residents that were gonna show up, and we were surprised that each, each guest we made, there was more participants. We're doing, currently doing declutter events and bringing dumpsters to the properties, and staff is helping residents get stuff to the dumpsters. We completed three of them, where we, one property, we even had a dumpster halfway through, a thirty yard, because it was still full of stuff. So, very helpful. And LHA is currently fully staffed for the first time. All positions are filled. Uh, Suites, we, uh, got rid of security last year and brought in building attendants, and I have never seen the Suites so clean, and these building attendants are hands-on, owning the night shifts. They're calling public safety if they see something out of the norm around the building, down the street. They're very involved in working with Sarah and, um, other members of the police department. And, um, Core and Public Safety have been, uh, playing a major role at the Suites lately. We've had a lot of, um, increased mental health situations, but Core, Sarah, Dave, Kennedy, they have all been there right by our side, helping us navigate those. Um, and one other thing I just wanna catch on for, Spring Creek and Fall River Management teamed up and partnered with Elder Share. They, Elder Share's been bringing in new distributions for years of these properties, but we saw some ways that we can improve it, so the manager and assistant manager went and got trained from Elder Share, and have taken over the distributions, and we have a little bit more say in the kind of foods that are coming, um, what our residents are requesting, and, um, actually seeing some participation in residents who have not participated in years.
Nice.
We're excited to be more hands-on there.
So I'm gonna be doing, um, public health and safety updates on behalf of Sarah Arnie. Um, we already mentioned the meth detector. That was one of the things she wanted to make sure you all knew about, that, uh, that's, we've been, that's received, and now we're gonna go over with our testing. Um, tacking on to, uh, the issues that we've been having around mental health and bringing in Core and, and MHP, really been working all the way around the residents to try and address their, help them get through their issues, make sure they can maintain successful housing, do everything we can to make sure that happens. But I really do, which Lisa touched on, but I really do want to, um, stress that we're working with MHP, that we had a meeting with them to really dig down, and we got to some of the issues that have been really needing to be talked about for a long time. And I think that we're on a good foot, and we've got, we're gonna use that as a jumping off point to coordinate with them and partner, improve that partnership ongoing as well.
So the issues were with MHP, not issues with the residents of the Suites?
It's more, um, it's, we're coming together around residents of the Suites who are needing support.
Okay.
From all of us. And then it's coming down to figuring out just things that people may have, um, misunderstood or about how, what our roles and responsibilities are, um, what to expect when, you know, a, an MHP person or a, a resident calls the police and what. There's just a lot of, there was just a productive conversation that happened about, um, working with MHP as a partner for the resident.
Yeah, um, with, with Core, um, I always have this question. It, it seems to be that crisis events do not respect the clock, but Core does. What's the procedure when, um, when there's a crisis at, you know, eight P M? Who comes, who handles that?
So, well, share us here next time we talk about it in the budget, we added a fourth, four team. So we are adjusting that, I think, before we step down. But we do train our officers with some of the similar, um, they go through similar training that Core does in terms of managing it, but I think we're, we've definitely extended the hours, I just can't remember what it is. But that's part of this conversation is to understand who does what, when, who calls, what do you do?
So I can ask that question again, Sarah?
Yeah.
And then her last update was just, um, that we're using in con, in consort with the HCI team from the city to get the security cameras across all properties, make sure they're all in the same system, can talk to the city system. So she's been helping us, uh, manage that project, and we have bids, and we're looking to move forward on them here next week. So that was everything that I had Sarah assist.
All right, any other discussion from commissioners?
I'm just always amazed at the amount of work you, and you're always smiling when you're here. And I know that doesn't translate everywhere, but I appreciate.
Come by on a Friday.
Fridays?
Well, yeah, maybe.
How this decade goes, how all things are working. Yeah, and, um, as a, you know, as, as an ex-past, I mean, it seems like, even when things aren't working, you can describe the problem now as opposed to, and be anything from mysteries.
Yeah.
So that's a little better.
Okay, I'm sorry, I think.
I should.
Well, it looks like two commissioners moved a seconded.
Yes.